I have a meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular scheduled Port Clinton City Council meeting on the Hart lot of Chambers, September 10th, 2024. Please stand for eminence for a pledge of allegiance and will be silent.
(inaudible)
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand as one nation and have given this with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, maybe Theodore. Would they please call the roll? Chuck Gilam?
Present.
Margaret Phillips?
Present.
Richard Morgan?
Present.
Pat Hobus?
Here.
Jerry Trolley?
Here.
Kathy Kane?
Here.
Thank you. Council, you previously received the August 27, 2024 regular meeting minutes. Does anyone have a motion to approve the minutes?
Madam President, I move for the approval of the minutes from the 24th, 27th of August.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion for motion by Ms. Phillips, second by Mr. Trolley to approve the August 27, 2024 regular meeting minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries the August 27, 2024 regular meeting minutes as hereby adopted. The chair notes that certification has been made regarding compliance with the rules and notification of this meeting. We have no guest presentation, no public comment. We move on to executive officer reports. Council, this evening, we have second readings on ordinance 1624 and 1724. 1624 was assigned to Mr. Trolley's Environment Public Works Committee. Resolution 24-6, 24-7, and 24-8, which was not assigned to committee. As we will still have a meeting at the next regular scheduled date, we will not have a quorum. So administration has asked that the second read of resolutions and ordinance be passed this evening to keep things timely. There are two new first read ordinances, 18-24 and 19-24. They will not be assigned to committee. Mr. Beal previously spoke about 1824. I'm not sure he will speak about 1924 when we get to that point. They can explain. Both of those are time sensitive and the administration has asked that they be passed on their first read. And that is all I have. Mayor is not here this evening. Mr. Beal, I want to hear your part.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to answer any questions about ordinance 16 when that comes up on the agenda. I'll just give a quick plug for ordinance 1924. It pertains to tree trimming and removal services and supplies as part of the urban forestry grant received from the U.S. Forest Service. This will be the first contract the city looks to execute as part of that grant. Mitigating any hazards from old, dangerous, dead trees and limbs attached to them to get those cleaned up and put to start the mission.
I have a question. Just ask it now or later.
You can.
On section two, a sum not to exceed, what's the correct value there? Because one document says 1,000 and one says 100.
Did I say they ignore the first one?
Okay, I wasn't sure which.
It said disregard the first one. It would be an error.
Okay, all right. I couldn't figure out because 1,000 didn't seem like much. Right. Okay, thank you. I wasn't sure without it. Can everybody go?
That's fine. Does anyone else have some other questions? Anything else to do?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Treasuries report.
Yes, sorry. Yes, our bed tax collected through the year is, this is through August 30th, $2,442,753.04. Our doc tax is $20,568.64. The rental registrations are at $59,700. So we're in pretty good shape.
I thought you were going to say trigger.
Popped me off there too. No mayor.
You usually have more time to prepare than law directed reporting.
Thank you, Madam President. Just to explain a little further what Madam President was indicating initially, since at the next meeting there will only be four members, no legislation can be voted on because in the Rice Code it states E5. There will be a quorum with four for just general business, but that's all that will be able to take place at the next meeting since there are only four.
If we're down to three, we cannot have a meeting. So we'll have to maybe cancel it if this is. Cancel the next meeting? So if the, if there could be a post that the next meeting will be canceled if we need to have some sort of special meeting, we will get done with everyone otherwise our next meeting will be the October meeting. Okay?
That's all I have, Madam President. Thank you.
Mr. Colston.
Nothing. Unless you have any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Colston? Thank you. Mr. Kressman.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to provide a quick update with the property maintenance officer duties. Since our last meeting, I've completed 96 total inspections and issued 21 reports with a total of 118 violations. I have 25 more reports that are in process that should go out by the end of this week. When those go out, that will complete the first zone that's been established for inspections. Beyond that, we've addressed complaint properties as well, and we've been able to make some traction with getting some things remedied that have been sort of outstanding issues for a while. So far, the project is moving along at a good speed.
Thank you for taking that one.
Are you getting feedback from the homeowners?
Plenty of feedback.
I guess I should have rephrased it. Some agreeable feedback?
Yes, yes, I am, yes. The majority of the feedback is agreeable and welcome.
Okay, good, good.
There's changes being made by the property owners, maybe a little surprised because there hasn't been any action in quite a while. So they're sort of curious to find out what's going on, but willing to accommodate, you know, the remedies to whatever violations have been noted.
Good, good. And what's the lead time in completing violations?
Well, so from notice, they have 21 days to address the violation. We don't have a time limit on when the problem needs to be fixed necessarily, so long as the problem has been addressed. So there's a lot of things that will affect how rapidly something can happen, you know, construction limitations, things like availability for contractors and such. So they need to contact me and propose a plan to address whatever the violation is within three weeks. So long as they do that, they have basically whatever runway they need to make the changes necessary.
Thanks, sir.
Ms. Phillips? Yes. What type of problems are you mostly addressing? And you also mentioned zones. Are you starting in a certain part of the city or just intermiss?
I am starting in a certain part of the city. The zones that I have created don't match the zones for the wards necessarily. There's 13 different zones. If anybody would like to see how those have been appropriated, I'd be glad to go over the maps that I've made for them and discuss that with you. The majority of the violations have been exterior surface violations, so chipping paint, rotting wood, deteriorating surfaces, missing siding. And then next to that would be vegetation and stormwater drainage, issues with vegetation growing up beside the buildings or gutters being removed or dysfunctional. No major, major issues have come up as a result of any of these. There have been a few properties that have been identified that do need some more serious attention, and we're working with the county and the health department and other relevant people to address those properties as sort of a one-off scenario. The majority of the properties are in really good shape. They have very minor violations that need to be addressed, and as such, the property owners have been very willing to address those issues.
Thank you.
So does this include any, sorry, some of the properties on Fulton that we got, you know, specifically a few people came in, you know, have come in multiple times about those properties. Are those part of them?
Yes, yes, they are. So the properties, essentially the operation runs complaints come first, and then the schedule that I've made based on zones that I've established for the city comes second. So those specific properties that you mentioned have been addressed.
Thank you.
I have one question. 21 days, then you say you do have a process, though, if they're just stonewall, you could readdress that. Like if they say if they had to fix a paint, six months later they're not.
Correct.
So you have a way to see through that and, okay.
Whenever I do an inspection, if there is a violation that a notice goes out for, I reschedule an inspection for roughly a month afterwards. If I get contact from the property owner as to plans to address whatever the violations are, then I push that inspection off based on the personal conversation I have with the property owner. If I get no communication with the property owner, then I go do another inspection, and if I find all the same things, then they get cited for the same violations.
Thank you very much. We want to commit a report. Finance, Ms. Phillips. Nothing tonight, Madam President. Thank you. Environment Public Works, Mr. Trolley.
Yes, the committee met tonight to discuss 1624, ordinance 1624, and, no.
Yeah.
Yeah, 1624. And we've, you know, we've voiced our opinion that we back it.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all.
Thank you. Safety Services, Ms. Phillips.
Thank you, Madam President. Nothing this evening.
Thank you. We want to correspondents. And in correspondence, we have the planning commission, August 8, 2024, meeting minutes. So motion to approve of correspondence.
Madam President, I move for acceptance of the correspondence listed for one-year planning permission.
Thank you. Do I have a second? One second. Thank you, Mrs. Phillips. I have a motion by Ms. Phillips, second by Mrs. King, to accept the correspondence as stated. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries the correspondence, you're right. Move on to readings of ordinance and resolutions. In the third reading, we move on to second readings. Would the clerk please read by title, Summerioli, ordinance 1624.
Ordinance number 16-24, an ordinance amending chapter 901 of the Port Clinton codified ordinances and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Does council wish to take the action as to ordinance 16-24?
Madam President?
Mr. Trolley?
I make a motion to waive the three required readings of ordinance 1624.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Second. Any discussion? I have a motion by Mr. Trolley, second by Mrs. Phillips, to waive the three required readings as to ordinance 16-24. Would the clerk please call the roll? Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Kathy Kane?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of 6-0. Does council wish to take any further action as to ordinance 1624?
Madam President?
Mr. Trolley?
Make a motion to retain the emergency clause in ordinance 1624.
Do I have a second? One second. Any discussion? Motion by Mr. Trolley, second by Mrs. Phillips, to retain the emergency clause as to ordinance 1624. Would the clerk please call the roll? Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Kathy Kane?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of 6-0. Emergency clause is hereby retained. Does council wish to take any further action as to ordinance 16-24?
Madam President?
Mr. Trolley?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance 1624.
Thank you. Do I have a second? One second. Thank you. Any discussion? I have a motion by Mrs. Trolley, second by Mrs. Phillips, to adopt ordinance 16-24. Would the clerk please call the roll? Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Kathy Kane?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of 6-0, ordinance 1624, is hereby adopted.
Madam President, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Since we're passing all the second readings tonight, can I make one motion?
No, we have to do each one.
Okay, no problem. Just thought I'd ask. See you sometime.
It's a good question, but no, we have to do each one.
I mean, I was just gonna motion to waive the required.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, we have to.
You're getting your accent. You're just rewinding. Keep playing the same.
Sit back and relax.
Would the clerk please read by title, Summerioli, ordinance 17-24?
Ordinance 17-24, an ordinance ratifying the motion passed by council on August 13, 2024, directing the mayor, auditor, law director, and safety service director to prepare and execute any legal instruments and other documents required to forgive borrowers' outstanding balances from the chip program and release such mortgages currently on file.
Thank you. Does council wish to take any action?
Madam President?
Yes.
And we waive the three required readings. Order 17-24.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Thank you.
Just keep it fast, Richard.
No. Okay. You're going to be done. Any discussion?
It was wonderful. We got to thank you, though. We never did thank you, you know, so this is my third term and that's the first one I've ever seen. So we did good, folks. Gabe, you did wonderful. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, would the clerk please call the roll? Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Kathy Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Cal, I'm sorry. Motion carries by a vote of 6-0. Three required readings are hereby waived. Does council wish to take any further action as to ordinance 1724?
Madam President, I move we adopt ordinance 17-24.
Thank you. Do I have a second? One second. Good. Thank you, Mr. Trolley. Any discussion? Okay, I have a motion by Mrs. Gilman, second by Mr. Trolley, to adopt ordinance 17-24. Would the clerk please call the roll? Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Kathy Kane?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of 6-0. Ordinance 17-24 is hereby adopted. Would the clerk please read by title, Summerioli, resolution 24-6?
Resolution 24-6, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Thank you. Does council wish to take any action as to resolution 24-6?
Madam President?
Mr. Trolley?
Make a motion to waive the three required readings, resolution 24-6?
Thank you. Do I have a second? One second. Thank you, Mrs. Phillips. Any discussion? I have a motion by Mr. Trolley, second by Mrs. Phillips, to waive the three required readings as to resolution 24-6. Would the clerk please call the roll? Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Kathy Kane?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of 6-0. We're waiting. I'm sorry, I lost my.
Wait.
Okay.
See, we shouldn't have all one.
I know, yeah.
I won't assume certain questions.
Motion carries by a vote of 6-0 to waive the three required readings as to resolution 24-6. Does council wish to take any further action as to resolution 24-6?
Madam President?
Mr. Trolley?
Make a motion to adopt resolution 24-6?
Thank you. Do I have a second? One second. Thank you, Mrs. Phillips. Any discussion? I have a motion by Mr. Trolley, second by Mrs. Phillips, to adopt resolution 24-6. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Kathy Kane?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of 6-0, resolution 24-6 is hereby adopted. Would the clerk please read by title, Summerioli, resolution 24-7?
Resolution 24-7, a resolution authorizing the continuation of the community reinvestment area agreement for Buckeye Community 76 LP and Ohio Limited Firm.
Thank you. Does council wish to take any action as to resolution 24-7?
Madam President, I move we waive the three required readings for resolution 24-7.
Thank you. Do I have a second? One second. Any discussion? I have a motion by Mrs. Gilman, second by Mrs. King, to waive the three required readings as to resolution 24-7. Would the clerk please call the roll? Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Kathy Kane?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of 6-0. The three required readings are hereby waived as to resolution 24-7. Does council wish to take any further action as to resolution 24-7?
Madam President?
Mrs. Gilman?
I move we adopt resolution 24-7.
Thank you. Do I have a second? One second. Thank you, Mrs. King. Any discussion? I have a motion by Mrs. Gilman, second by Mrs. King, to adopt resolution 24-7. Would the clerk please call the roll? Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Kathy Kane?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of 6-0. Resolution 24-7 is hereby adopted. Would the clerk please read by title, Summerioli, resolution 24-8?
Resolution?
Oh. Sorry.
Resolution 24-8, a resolution authorizing the continuation of the community reinvestment area agreement for RAR Hospitality LLC.
Thank you. Does council wish to take any action as to resolution 24-8?
Mr. Trolley? Motion to waive the three required readings of resolution 24-8.
Thank you. Do I have a second? One second. Thank you, Mrs. Phillips. Any discussion? I have a motion by Mr. Trolley, second by Mrs. Phillips, to waive the three required readings as to resolution 24-8. Would the clerk please call the roll? Kathy Kane?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of 6-0. The three required readings are hereby waived. Does council wish to take any further action as to resolution 24-8?
Madam President, make a motion to adopt a resolution 24-8.
Thank you. Do I have a second? One second. Thank you. Any discussion? I have a motion by Mr. Trolley, second by Mrs. Phillips, to adopt resolution 24-8. Would the clerk please call the roll? Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Kathy Kane?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of 6-0. Resolution 24-8 is hereby adopted. We'll move on to first readings. Would the clerk please read by title, Summerioli, ordinance 18-24?
Ordinance number 18-24, an ordinance amending chapter 1501, section 1501 dot 01 of the Port Clinton codified ordinances to reflect the adoption of 2020/17 Ohio Fire Code and declaring an emergency.
Does council wish to take any action as to ordinance 18-24?
Madam President, I move we waive the three required readings for ordinance 18-24.
Thank you. Do I have a second? One second. Thank you, Mrs. King. Any discussion? I have a motion by Mrs. Gilman, second by Mrs. King, to waive the three required readings as to ordinance 18-24. Would the clerk please call the roll? Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Kathy Kane?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of 6-0. The emergency, I'm sorry, the three required readings as to ordinance 18-24 are hereby waived. Does council wish to take any further action as to ordinance 18-24?
Madam President?
Mrs. Gilman?
I move we retain the emergency clause for ordinance 18-24.
Thank you. Do I have a second? One second. Any discussion? I have a motion by Mrs. Gilman, second by Mrs. King, to retain the emergency clause as to ordinance 18-24. Would the clerk please call the roll? Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of six zero. The emergency clause is hereby retained as to ordinance eighteen dash twenty-four. This council wish to take any further action as to ordinance eighteen dash twenty-four.
Madam President, I move we adopt ordinance eighteen dash twenty-four.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. King, any discussion? I have a motion by Mrs. Gilman, second by Mrs. King, to adopt ordinance eighteen dash twenty-four. Would the clerk, please call the roll.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Kathy King?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of six zero, ordinance eighteen dash twenty-four is hereby adopted. Would the clerk, please read by title and summary only, ordinance nineteen dash twenty-four.
Ordinance number nineteen dash twenty-four, and or, excuse me, an ordinance authorizing and directing the director of safeties, director of safety and service to enter into an agreement for tree trimming and removal services and supplies and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This council wish to take any action as to ordinance nineteen dash twenty-four.
Madam President?
Mr. Trolley.
Make a motion to be waived the three required readings of ordinance nineteen dash twenty-four.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Give us notice. Any discussion?
Could, Madam President, could, one of you three gentlemen, Mr. Christman, Mr. Philister, or Gabe, discuss this for Mr. Beal, I should say. Thank you. Discuss this, discuss this ordinance or the folks that aren't on the tree commission.
Sure. So we signed our sub-awardee agreement with American Forestry, I think, two weeks ago, so that has given us the approval to start contracting for our tree remediation and approval for our application for reimbursement for any of those charges. So this is the first phase of our urban forestry project, which will be hazard mitigation, tree removal, tree trimming, and it's quite expensive. It covers ninety percent of the entire city. So, yeah, the, the ordinance is to, to be able to fund the contract work to take care of the risk mitigation that we need to across the city.
I have a couple questions. But we haven't selected a company to do this yet, is that correct?
Correct. We, we do have a quote, so we do know that the figure is at least appropriate. We're still working to get some other quotes and to select the final contractor to do the work.
Okay, makes sense. Also, this is trimming or removing trees?
Both.
It, it, it does not plant ones in its place?
Those will come at a later phase in the project. At this point, this is just the beginning.
Okay, thank you. Makes sense to me.
Mr. Christman, stump removal included?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead. I have a motion by Mr. Trolley, second by Mrs. Phillips, to waive the three required readings as to ordinance nineteen dash twenty-four. Would the clerk, please call the roll.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Kathy King?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of six zero. The three required readings are hereby waived. This council wish to take any further action as to ordinance nineteen dash twenty-four.
Yes, Madam President. Motion to retain the emergency clause in ordinance nineteen twenty-four.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? I have a motion by Mr. Trolley, second by Mrs. Phillips, to retain the emergency clause as to ordinance nineteen dash twenty-four. Would the clerk, please call the roll.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Kathy King?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of six zero. The emergency clause is hereby retained as to ordinance nineteen dash twenty-four. This council wish to take any further action as to ordinance nineteen twenty-four.
Yes, Madam President. Make a motion to adopt ordinance nineteen dash twenty-four.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Phillips. Any discussion? I have a motion by Mr. Trolley, second by Mrs. Phillips, to adopt ordinance nineteen dash twenty-four. Would the clerk, please call the roll.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Kathy King?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of six zero, ordinance nineteen dash twenty-four is hereby adopted. I'll move on to business from the floor. Mr. Morgan?
Don't, nothing.
Mrs. Phillips?
Thank you, Madam President. I've only had the same comments again, which I did talk to Ms. Schenker beforehand, and it is the same thing about the wooden structure